Twenty twenty, roll call, please let the record reflect. Everybody is in attendance. Uh, pledge of allegiance? If you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have to go through our annual election for chair and vice chair. Does anybody wish to occupy the chair?
I'm going to nominate you.
If you're okay, I'll second that, if that was a nomination.
Okay, all right. I'm nominating myself as chair, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, vice chair. Mr. Dickman, I believe you are current vice chair.
Yep.
Do you wish to continue as vice chair, or is there someone else that would like to further hash the ring? All right, I'll make a motion then to nominate Councilmember Dickman to vice chair.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda approval. Anybody seen any changes or corrections? All right, I'll make a motion to...
Yeah, one, Mr. Chair, just on number nine, we were talking through dates. So the two-six date should be two thirteen, the three-five date should be three twelve. For the council meetings, we'll actually meet, I think, on the sixth and the fifth. Those are the first Thursdays of those months.
Okay, so one-twenty-three-twenty should be...
Two-six-twenty should be two thirteen, three-five-twenty should be three twelve.
All right, so noted. Thank you. And everybody's good with their, their dates for the meeting liaison? All right, with that noted change, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Open forum. Minutes, the minutes from November seventh. Now, we don't have minutes from last month, technically, because we did not actually go into session.
Correct.
Any questions or changes or comments on the minutes from November seventh?
Uh, make a motion to approve.
I'll second that one.
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes as is, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to item seven, new business, Ravinia Fourteenth Edition Final Plan and Final PUD Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting approval of a final PUD development plan for thirty-three single-family homes in the Fourteenth Edition. This is consistent with the original Ravinia approvals. And as you noted, the item was originally scheduled for the December meeting, but was postponed to tonight due to a lack of a quorum. This is the area where the Fourteenth Edition is. This is Gleason Parkway. This is the Hunter, what we call the Hunter neighborhood, right here. It's this portion, Phase fourteen, right here, of the, the project. It will add another segment of roadway here. And I think my next slide shows it. So there is a trail connection that will connect to Hunter from Ravinia, from the south portion of the Fourteenth Edition, which is this, this is that south portion of that new road. There's a trail connection that will connect outside along the existing right-of-way and connect to Hunter Road. That'll be built by Lennar as part of this project. There's a lot of discussion about this during the original approvals, and that is a condition of that approval. So we'll complete that trail section. Landscaping is consistent with the ordinance, and there's a number of sub-monument signs that we approved an amendment for a while ago. And those will, there will be sub-monument signs installed as part of this project in this area. And additionally, one of the benefits of the Ravinia PUD was a dedication of land for a city-owned water facility in this location. Right now, it's shown as Outlet B, but because we'll be building a structure there, it needs to be platted. So we've included a condition that it be platted as a lot and deeded to the city with this phase. So that's this area again, right here. We do recommend approval of the resolution approving the final PUD plan for Ravinia Fourteenth. Happy to answer any questions, and of course, the applicant is here tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, commission discussion and recommendations. Who should start off?
Kendra, what is the water facility? What is it likely to be? Do we know? It's not a tower or anything, is it?
No, it would be, if it's constructed there, and I think engineering is still reviewing a number of options, that's one of the sites potentially for a well. So it'd be a well with a house, not a water tower. I think the water tower site is planned optionally closer to County Road ten, but this could be a well.
Okay, so there wouldn't be much above ground?
No, no, it might be, it would look like, usually a wellhouse looks like a little shed.
Just a little shed?
Yeah. We're keeping our options open, I think, as we're continuing to study the water supply plan. It may not occur here, but it's one of the option sites.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, if somebody is about to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the primary plan as, as shown. PUD development plan as shown.
Okay, and also second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, item seventy, twenty nineteen recap and twenty twenty priorities for the planning commission. So Brad provided a memo. I'll have our staff aboard.
We don't have a staff who can prepare the memo, I can't. Explains it, I think we would just ask that you kind of take a look at it, discuss if you have anything to add, anything to change, or questions.
Yeah, I think the twenty nineteen summary is a summary of what Brad considered the largest efforts that the planning commission was involved in. And then for twenty twenty, the goal tonight is to identify the planning commission's priorities. And what Brad has drafted is a pretty significant one-bullet list, which is starting to process the ordinance amendments required by the comprehensive plan. So some of the things that that entails is, under state law, we are required within nine months of adopting the comprehensive plan to bring our zoning map and zoning ordinance into compliance with the comprehensive plan. So one of the first things you'll see is a new zoning map. So what will that do? There were a couple of areas where we made some land use changes, if you remember, as part of the comp plan. So we'll have some zoning ordinance map changes that'll correspond to those land use changes. Then, as part of that, there were a number of implementation steps where we said, here's some ordinances we need to change. There are some, uh, new standards, for example. There are some ordinances that will need to be not so much added as revised. So there's a number of steps coming, coming forward to implement that comprehensive plan in the course of the next year. You'll also, as part of that, see updates to the park dedication ordinance. If you remember, for those of you who are here, the park dedication ordinance and fee schedule is based on our comprehensive plan. So the cost to implement that comprehensive plan has now changed because we modified the parks' plan. So we'll be coming through with amendments to the park dedication ordinance, again.
So all these changes, are they going to be just administered, or do they require a public hearing?
Almost all of them require public hearings. There are some ordinance changes, for example, there's an implementation step that says, add a manure ordinance. And the manure ordinance is outside of the zoning ordinance, it's in, I forget which chapter it's in. That could be adopted by the council only, for example. But your list is quite lengthy. Those items, that is, that will come through planning commission. Anything that's a change to the subdivision ordinance, the zoning map or the zoning ordinance has to come through the planning commission for a public hearing first.
And when, when do we expect that we'll start seeing some of those? You said we have nine months. When does the nine-month time clock start?
Spring. So we'll kind of pay attention to what's on the calendar. So there's, excuse me, the time started when we adopted the comprehensive plan, which was in November of twenty nineteen. So you'll start to see things this spring. It kind of depends, it looks like March is going to be a pretty big agenda, potentially, if things come in like, like people think they will. So we'll kind of watch the agenda so you have time to think about those amendments. But it could be as early as March. I think the first one you'll see is the zoning map amendment. And then we'll start working on ordinances. And I think Brad intends to sort of prioritize those with council. And some of that, we're hoping, we may squeeze past the nine-month. If the new planner comes on board this spring, we'll have them take on some of those tasks as well.
All right. Any other priorities? Any of you think that we should add to this?
Am I looking at the right list? It's this one, right?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to, today I was looking, and this is something I haven't discussed with anyone, but I don't think it's new as far as the topic, is tree preservation and replacement policy. We've always had a tree preservation plan, but I'd like to see a policy drawn up that actually enforced some level of protection to existing trees. Also, a way of, a criteria for identifying significant trees that are existing on a site. Not as a means to make development more difficult, but if we truly want to preserve Corcoran's rural feel, then I don't think anyone could argue that the native trees or that we have don't contribute to that rural feel. And I think we've seen evidence of where developers or owners go in and they pull out every tree on the property. I'm thinking of the one that's on County Road one sixteen and... Hackamore. They can, it's their land, they can do that, but I think that... I pulled the City of Shorewoods Tree Preservation and Replacement Policy, and I was reading through it, and they really hit the highlights about tree replacement ratios, financial guarantees from sub, from subdivisions, that it's held for two years to see that the tree actually can live. Ways to protect existing trees. I don't know that we have that in our zoning ordinance. I know that those are best management practices by excavators, but I don't think we have anything in our zoning ordinance, do we, Kendra? They talk about that. They talk about indirect root damage through site modification, if you take off too much topsoil. I mean, these are all good management, best management practices, but I think that, you know, we want development, good development to occur in Corcoran, and I feel that writing this out really spells out a quality level and a practice level that we want to see. But it also doesn't say we're going to keep every tree regardless. I mean, there's a criteria for reviewing trees, calling them significant trees, but then they also identify trees that are problems, that you wouldn't want to take out. So I think there's a real balance, and I'd really like to see something like this in our zoning ordinance. I don't know if anyone else, I know this has come up in the past.
Well, we have. I think the discussion has kind of come back that it's, it's, it's an issue, I believe our mayor doesn't really support the tree ordinance, but it's been, I guess, kind of communicated that maybe it's not something that we want to venture into. But I, you know, I think, but you're right, we see evidence of it all the time, and...
And we have the public question, and ask questions about that, too. So, um, you know, the mayor is one person. And his vote is not to diminish his, his opinion, but his one, one vote of, of several others. And, and I think that, if, if my memory serves me right, he's referencing a, a situation that occurred some years ago. And I would hate to see that kind of situation now dictate how, with the possibility, the negative possibilities for the entirety of Corcoran. I would want to, I would be concerned about that.
Yeah, so tonight, the planning commission, certainly you have a lot on your plate with what you're required to do by the twenty forty comp plan, and if you remember, those implementation items. But you certainly can, again, I believe this was on your priority list last year, and I believe, Mr. Chair, you present our planning commission priorities to the council. And the council takes that under advisement, along with the Parks Commission's priorities. And so I think certainly this is one item, if the committee is, as a whole, is in support of that, that you can add, and add others as well.
Okay, I have two others, sorry. And I'm happy to just put this in writing, send it to Brad, and then it could be given to the other, to whomever, to review. Because I'm kind of bringing this up, and you guys are like, what? I haven't heard this before. But I just thought of it, so, well, the tree one I didn't just think of, that's been a recurring thing. But the other ones I was looking at, and may or not, may or not be supported or relevant, was about phosphorus fertilizers. And I was looking at Medina's city code, and they do talk about turf fertilizer usage. And I know that in the state of Minnesota, they do have restrictions on using fertilizers with phosphorus, but I don't know about the enforcement. And I think that water quality is another, we have a lot of water in Corcoran, and so preserving our water quality, especially with more subdivisions where they are starting lawns and maybe don't know that they shouldn't be using phosphorus after the first year of when it's established, it'd be even better if they didn't use them at all. But they have the choice, the, the state statutes allows them. But what Medina has is that they specifically talk about the use of turf fertilizers. And they ask that wherever fertilizer is sold in the city, that you present both options of, of phosphorus and non-phosphorus, but that they also present the city's view on it. And, you know, you may feel that, you know, is that really planning commission stuff? Probably isn't, but it was something that I looked at and said, well, it speaks to all of the development that we want, and that we are, that we currently have in Corcoran, and that we'd like to see. But again, we want to still maintain that rural feel and, and not damage our waterways through that development. So that was another thing. And then the other one I looked at was just, and this isn't a zoning ordinance, it's probably to do with junkyards, as to whether we actually define what a junkyard is. You're probably thinking, why do I care? But since we're very concerned about the appearance of our city and people driving through it, I think it would be good if we could clearly define what is a junkyard, and actually make it a term that can be applied to, um, those use, land uses that, uh, that are against what are in our ordinance. We can say that is a junkyard, this is our, um, our city code pertaining to that, and clearly prohibit it. We may already have something that does that. Mike?
Our nuisance ordinance.
Does our nuisance, is that under our nuisance?
That is an issue of...
We do define a junkyard, but I'm not sure you, 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 what do you mean by a junkyard?
Well, Medina says it's pretty much attractive land where it has these features. And then it talks about piles of stored temporarily or regularly or continually. And they, they list a whole slew of, of things that would comprise in either singly or as a group the use of the land as a junkyard. And it's a long list, and I can give it to you, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we define it under...
That's right.
We find under our nuisance ordinance.
Yes, but this talks about how the land is being used.
Sure.
And defines it as a junkyard. And that's what I, I thought, hmm. So does that give the city more teeth to be able to, Kendra, I don't know, maybe you're thinking it makes no sense, but...
Yeah, I, I think we could, we could look at that. I, I, if, if it rises to the priority list, I don't know. We've just redone our nuisance ordinance, and we do have a definition of junkyard. So I'd have, I don't know tonight that I would say adding it to a list of prohibit. We don't prohibit land uses. So if it's not listed as permitted, it's prohibited. And we do define a junkyard. So I think they're already prohibited.
Okay. I didn't know if we defined a junkyard. I did a search on junkyards quickly and didn't see anything. I was actually more interested in the tree thing, but it was something that came up, and I thought, hmm.
Yeah, but I was just looking online, and the code on our website is not our most current version of our code, and I don't see the nuisance amendment on the website.
Okay.
The, the March twenty nineteen version still defined junkyard, and I just don't know if it got eliminated when we did our nuisance update. So we, we'll look at that. I mean, certainly, the nuisance thing has been a priority for the council. And as we've been working in the last nine months, we've found some things that we think could be stronger, and we certainly can take a look at that as well. If the commission wants to make that a priority, we'll pass that on to the council.
I think one of our priorities last year wasn't, didn't we have the PUD issue on there?
We had this.
It's been addressed? Where is that as far as significant changes? Is it something that, is the city council?
So, yeah. Some, some, that is one of the implementation items, to take a look at that. That's a pretty significant undertaking. We've had discussions with the council about it in a, at a high level, but certainly haven't gotten into any. This is the direction we want to take.
Can you just refresh my memory about what were the specifics on the PUD that were being reviewed? Were there specific items of the PUD? Because it's kind of a marsh of, I can remember us talking about the level of flexibility with setbacks relative to specific projects. But was, was there, was there language that was needed to be more restrictive in the PUD? Was that what we were looking, what the interest was, or?
So the council discussion, this fall, I think it was, was sort of a discussion that there's, we're not getting enough, we're getting asked to provide flexibility on certain things, and let's think about what we're willing to provide flexibility on. And I should double-check my notes here before I say something wrong. But the council had a discussion and said, basically, there are some things we just will not provide PUD flexibility on. Here's some things we might consider if we got some other flexibility from, from the developer. And, sorry, I just got to pull, I wasn't prepared for that question, but...
I think, Kendra, that's when we had the joint session before either council or before our planning commission, where we came here early and had the discussion around that. Setbacks was a part of it, I think lot size was another part of it. Percentage garage facing, we talked about that.
And certainly not everybody agreed, but there was a consensus or a majority position on where that flexibility would be, would be granted.
But that's not, that's not specifically changing the language?
No, we talked about that, and the council's direction was not necessarily to train, change the PUD language. So what the implementation in the comp plan says is we'll take a look at the PUD, but that we have direction about where the council's willing to provide some flexibility. And, and there were a few where they said, I don't care what you do, we're not providing...
And that part I remember, I just couldn't remember if we were tightening language somewhere about the PUD.
That was not the direction, but we did keep that in the implementation as a look at the PUD as a mid-range goal. Not a, not a priority for this year. So we agreed at that joint meeting to keep the existing side yard setbacks as they are, the five and the ten. Keep the architectural standards, and as long as we keep those with the garage maximum, that would kind of by default, remember, address the lot width issue. And then they, the city might be willing to do a higher percentage of garage face if we have higher architecture and no snout houses. And wanted to hold to the setback with the garage, just reinforce that. And, and then the final note I have is no change to the code, just a change in the message to developers at this time from our seven twenty-five work session. But because I think it's always fair to look at the PUD, that remains as a medium-term implementation goal.
Pretty much all of our developments. Didn't we have a, I think somebody one time said, we just expect all of our developments are going to be PUDs now? No, no, who's going to come in here without a PUD development?
Yeah, I think that was part of that joint session as well. I mean, we talked about it a lot over the last year with the council and with the commission. And I think there certainly are folks who feel like that's okay, because that gives us the city negotiating power. I think we had the conversation about, you know, do we want to write an ordinance that lets people do what the market wants to do? And, and I think the decision was no. We, if we're, if, if it's not going to be, we want to be able to negotiate the things with folks. Because in order to get our density, we're not going to have half-acre lots and still comply with the density. We need to have affordable sewer and water, so, and comply with our met council density goals. So you're going to have to be at the three units an acre on average. And we're going to do that through the PUD was generally the consensus. That could change, councils change, but that was sort of the consensus, no change to the code right now, but clarify the message to developers. And we'll see, as the next development comes in, how that message was heard.
All right, so, so we're gonna, can we add then our, our tree preservation? I think the junkyard is probably something we maybe won't add to that list.
Yeah, that's fine, it sounds like it's...
Any further thought on the fertilizer side? You know, there's so few places now where you can actually get fertilizers with phosphate in. I know a place, even though I, I can buy it, I, I don't use it. What do developers, when they put in these homes in, in the homeowners association, because they're a commercial business, can, do, do we know if they use a lot of phosphate in, in fertilizing these, these neighborhoods?
I don't know. I don't know what the state rules are.
I have the state, the state ordinance.
Most cities that adopt it have different rules for new development versus existing development. But I do know it's pretty hard to find phosphorus fertilizer.
I think Minnesota was the, it's what I read, Minnesota was the first state to regulate phosphorus-containing fertilizers. So maybe it's just, it was something that just came up since we have a lot of water. Maybe it's not, I think for me, that tree preservation and replacement policy, with emphasis on, on the policy aspect, since we do have a tree preservation plan, but we've never had, we do not have a policy to enforce preservation in a fair manner.
Well, what we've seen recently, though, is they go in and they just clear-cut the land. We don't require, the city doesn't require approval for, for tree clearing, do they? But we have no way to stop or prevent anybody from tearing out ten acres of trees.
Correct.
Do other cities have those kinds of policies, or?
It's pretty rare for cities to have a tree preservation policy that's not tied to development. So in Plymouth, a person could go cut down all the trees and then come in and ask for... So in Plymouth, a person could go cut down all the trees and then come in and ask for approval of a subdivision to avoid the tree preservation woodlands.
Your, your, probably best approach is to look at it as a reward versus a penalization, right? So you, instead of giving something up in a PUD, if they give up, if they allow more trees to be preserved, maybe we could give them something else as an offset. It's more of a carrot versus the stick approach would probably be the most palatable for some of the council members. And would probably work better as far as development goes. So you don't have what happened down there or what happened in Medina south of there. No.
I mean, it's. Yeah, it could be a parks credit, right? I mean, it could be.
Could be a lot of things.
Could be a lot of things that are negotiated as part of a PUD.
We brought this to the council, I think it was this year too, and talked about, it might've been last year, where we talked about different cities' ways to address that carrots and sticks. I'd have to look for what packet that was in, but we gave some examples of different ways to deal with that. It may have been 2018 now that I think about it. Because there are ways to incentivize that through, you know, smaller lots. So you get the same number of units by, but preserve significant woodlands. You know, those are sometimes more nuanced and it's a lot easier for cities to just say, oh no, do your tree count and this is how many you have to save, which is the standard tree preservation ordinance. But I think this council has said, if we're going to do it, we're more likely to do incentives than penalties.
But I think too though, a lot of the cities that have these preservation replacement policies, developers still build in them. There are still subdivisions occurring in these cities. So they're not, they're not prohibiting development.
Right.
I, I can't say that a developer, a developer wouldn't look at it and say, hey, I'm not going to develop in Corcoran. It really depends specifically to the site. And again, it's not that all trees are worth preserving. We, we might, we have a lot of, you know, box elders and, you know, there's a lot of trees that are not worth preserving. And they should go because the replacement tree is going to be much better. It's just that this actually talks about it. Right now, we don't have anything that says that.
Well, I have no problem with adding it to our list. Okay, anything else anybody can think of?
So Kendra, I'm probably going to get pushed back again on it. I'm anticipating I will get pushed back again.
Well, I think it's the planning commissions and it's not Meredith. The planning commission is supporting it, so the planning commission.
I know, I'm not saying, I'm just saying me that I'll hear about it. So what is the best, I mean, for me, if I was making a case about this on my own outside of the planning commission, I'd really present an argument for it, but I don't know that that, I can do that in this situation. What are your thoughts?
You can always come to open forum as a, as a citizen to any city council meeting and bring it up there too. And provide examples like this one from Shorewood. I'm interested in reading, reading it.
Okay.
You can always reach out to any council member and provide that information as well. You don't have to do it in an official forum as a, as a planning commission member either.
You know, what I, I might suggest is that, you know, so this will be presented to the city council.
When are you going to do it?
If you'd like, you can, you can join me on that day and maybe you can speak to it.
What day is that going to be?
I think he had it on.
12th.
I think he had it on email.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just one of the issues we had next door was it was called tree preservation. And Maple Grove went down a different pathway of forest preservation. We've got a huge stand of trees behind city hall here, beautiful forest. We've got a number of stands throughout the community. Do we have an inventory on those kind of things? Am I asking the question right? I, I, it would be nice to identify those stands of trees. And obviously there's even lone trees standing in places, big oaks, big maples, all of those things. I remember a stand of trees that were 10 acres and two days before the tree preservation ordinance took effect, the property owner went in and tore down every oak tree, everything. It just devastated that stand of trees. Do we, have we ever looked at, is there a way we could talk with those landowners? If we do have an inventory of those forests, forested areas and such, to talk about letting the city help preserve those areas in turn, a bargaining chip that, you know, they can build more houses on the, on the open space that's there instead of tearing down those trees. Turn it into our parklands, turn it into those kinds of things. I, I know, I know it went through a number of, of changes and there's still some high quality forests standing in Maple Grove. There's some beautiful ones here. I just, I haven't dug deep enough into what kind of forest preservation we've got going on here.
So we have an inventory and that's in the comp plan.
Yeah.
We certainly don't have the funding to outright buy things for parks. But what the comp plan and the ordinance says is if you've got those, we want to preserve them. And so it becomes on a case by case basis. We haven't reached out individually, to my knowledge, to landowners that are, that have tree, forested areas. But we have identified those. And in fact, the way our tree survey requirements are written is to identify those.
Okay.
Forests as much as significant trees. So we're as interested in a large group of trees that may not be individually significant, but are a forest as we are in the 40-inch oak.
Right. I just, I don't, I don't want to go to a point where we had something where I came from to out to here. And all of a sudden the city, nobody's going to tell me what I can do with my property and completely devastate something. I'd rather have a little bit more collaboration between the owners and the developers and the city to be able to keep these stands of trees. I'm, I'm one that, I've got a ton of box elders that I love to cut them all down, but then I'd have no windbreak out of my, out of my property. But I'm, I'm doing everything I can to replace them with pines, maples, try to get them growing in between all of that and use the canopy to help nurse those trees along and get hardwoods in and stuff, so.
We do have inventory of high quality, right?
Correct.
And we did do something with the OSNP update with regards to high quality.
Correct. So we specifically as part of the OSNP give priority to those areas that have the forested areas outside of those areas. So we don't specifically, you know, give a bonus like we do in the OSNP for those, but I think that same concept can apply.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm on board with you, Commissioner Wu. I, I did, I'm tired of seeing these things just gone. And, and there's a number of trees that have been saved along parkways and stuff in Maple Grove that. I, I, on the planning commission, I said, what's the harm of leaving it there and seeing if it stands? And there's a few of them that are sitting real close to 10. And Lawndale Dunkirk Parkway, some big oaks, they're still there, they're doing just fine. Even next to some houses, they, they, they left them there and, and things are good, so.
I certainly wouldn't want to see an owner go cut all the trees down in anticipation. I think that that's what's happened here before.
Right.
But I, you know, what do you do? I mean.
Again, it, I've always said it's, it's the owner's property.
Right.
But there's got to be something that can entice them and the developers to.
To keep them.
To preserve and, and help. They're, they're a nice amenity in a, in a new development instead of all these houses going in and they got two, two inch maples next to their driveway and in the, in the boulevard and stuff. So I, I absolutely agree with you. I haven't come up with a good way of doing it or writing it or anything else other than just collaborating and work with each other to try and do that. But there's some people that resist that, so. Thanks for bringing it up very much.
Well, so I think you want to present something to, um, if anything I can do to help.
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll just gather some notes about the kinds of things that would keep it a kind of a balanced approach, not, again, not a stick.
But we are, the direction from the commission is add it to the commission's priority list. So that'll be on the memo from Brad to the council on March 12th as well, correct? Okay, I just want to be clear.
I think the longer we wait.
So we should probably get a motion for the commission.
Right, I mean, we're seeing it happen. So if we don't, at least put something in there, risk continues to be high.
I see. Corcoran doesn't have that many trees to give away, you know? Being that we have a lot of wetland and a lot of farmland, you know? And any stand of trees is worth attention of someone. Fortunately, development coming our way has been, you know, the, the major players are coming in and they just, they have a, you know, scorched earth mentality to, to lay everything flat. They want to get rid of elevations and, and development costs. I support the benefit for that and maximize the number of lots. They'll continue to do that over and over again. I mean, if it was a small developer, a lot of them will leave it because they can see the inherent value of, you know, of that kind of amenity, if you will, but. Okay, any other comments or discussion or memo?
Is there a motion, Mr. Chair? We should probably just take a motion for the priorities of the planning commission.
Okay. So we have the 2040 comprehensive plan, a tree preservation, fertilizers. You know, maybe, maybe we could, I mean, is there something that we can maybe do to put it in as a part of a, this developer's coming in, he's going to build this development and they're going to have a homeowners association. Can we, can we regulate, can we use the phosphorus materials through homeowner association requirement that they?
I feel like if it's important to the city, we should probably not do it on a case by case basis. So if you, if you feel like it's important, we should look at it as a larger issue rather than, you know, just the ones with the HOA have to comply with it.
Yeah. I think with more suburban type lawns, I think it's pretty important, quite, quite important.
Do we add it to our list?
Sure.
Just to please look at the issue and, okay. All right, we'll add fertilizers, the use of types. And then the PUD, we'll just flip that one since there's already, things are moving on with that. We don't need to really add it to our list.
Yeah, I think it's covered in your first bullet. So I think you're, you're okay unless you have a specific thing about it that you want to highlight for the council.
Okay, anything else? All right, well, I'll take a, a motion to set that as our memo to our changes to Brad.
Some, yep, some moved, Dickman.
I'll second it, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, I'll just move on to item eight, the planning project update. Any questions or comments? So the WESL stuff is still moving along good?
The EAW comment period ended today, two hours ago, three hours ago now. And so we will review those comments from the agencies, prepare information for the council meeting on the January 23rd meeting. And if the council finds no need for EIS, the developer could proceed with a formal application.
Was there a lot of comments on it?
I think we got six agency comments and it's the form letter we always get from agencies on EAWs. So there was nothing, none of them had any concerns in terms of a significant environmental review, which again is the point of the EAW, to identify significant environmental impacts that require additional analysis and sort of set the stage for what things need to be evaluated as a project moves forward. So we'll be reviewing that with staff and preparing materials for the council meeting on the 23rd. So certainly take a look at that packet, attend that meeting. The earliest you would see something, and I don't have an application yet, but the earliest you'd see something on that is March. That would be pretty aggressive, but that would be the earliest you'd see a preliminary plat on that project.
And I, you know, I'm just thinking, so the sewer and water extension would be quite lengthy for that development, wouldn't it?
Well, not compared to the sewer and water extension for Pulte or Ravinia, but it would still be significant, yes, because it'll have to come across 116.
The closest is going to actually be in Ravinia.
So similar to the last two big projects we did, this big project would also have a pretty significant infrastructure component and pretty significant transportation improvements. But the first step is to complete the AW, so we'll see that at the end of the month. And honestly, there's no planning items. We likely will not have a February meeting, but assume we will unless you hear from Michael.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Item 8B, city council report.
Thank you, Chair, fellow commissioners. Been a long time since we've met, since I've been here myself. I'll just sit on a couple. One you already talked about tonight, we adopted the 2040 comp plan on the 25th of November. Thank you for those that were able to attend that joint work session on the 12th with the Urban Land Institute. I thought that was really informative. There was good information that came out of that. And I had sent a link to, I know, council members on YouTube, I don't know if you sent it to everybody.
Okay.
I got it.
Oh, you got it too, okay. Then we held a closed session and agreed to land sale to St. Teresa's. So my understanding that that has gone through. And we had a presentation from Three Rivers Park Commissioner, Marge Beard, talking about proposed Diamond Lake Regional Trail quarter that would run north and south through Corcoran from Rogers down, pretty much all the way down, I think to.
Excelsior, didn't it?
Excelsior, like Yidda or something like that. And that's really early stages. That's like a, sounds like a 20-year project type thing, the way it goes. That's all the real highlights I had. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have on any of these other topics or anything else that comes to mind.
So St. Teresa bought this land right next to city hall?
Yep.
They bought a whole parcel, lots back in Berwick?
No, I think it's between 12 and 13 acres, something like that.
But there's no delineation there though.
Isn't it the south?
It's, it'll be divided up, yeah. And there's a portion that, because of the linear park, that, that portion will be kept with the city. So they're really buying off 116 and then down a portion of ways. I don't know if it would go all the way to the. I don't know if it would go all the way to the tree line or, or not. I'm sure it'll have to be surveyed out exactly what it is.
Is the purchase price public?
Yeah. Purchase price was made public. It should be in the packet from, uh, how do we do it on the...
See, okay, what does it pay out according to basis? Got that out, Dr. Henry?
I'd say it was around $56,000 per raw acre, something like that. Pretty, all the terms are, are in the packet. You should have looked all that up.
Hasn't been any movement as far as with St. Teresa? Any further movement for drawings or designs or anything like that?
I don't think we've seen anything since the, when we had that work session with them.
They had kind of just a concept planned, didn't they?
They've got their team together, though, so I would expect that they have a purchase agreement with some timeline, I believe, so I think you'll see something.
Because I mean, when, when Brad talked about the sale of the property, there was a concept shown. But I didn't know if they'd just gotten from another project and put it on there just to fit it, kind of just representative of something versus something that was actually, you know, they're working on.
It looked pretty specific to the property because it was laid out with the street design and where the buildings would fit within the property. It's, it's worth noting that the sale of the property is contingent upon them developing with the plan.
That's what Brad had mentioned.
Right. So they, they cannot, if they decide not to go through with the project, they cannot resell the land. The land will have to be sold back to the city.
Right, he mentioned that.
At the original sale price.
Yeah. It can't be flipped to be something else.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, any other business? Item nine, Commissioner Lai's on calendar. I think he had all indicated earlier. Everybody's good with their dates. No need to change, okay? All right, well, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Some move, Dickman.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourned this meeting, say aye.
Aye.